Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
And Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a court. Mayor.
And we're called to order. Commissioner Lucas, will you let us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand. Bow your head. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct business for this city. God help us to make the right decision for all of our citizens. God be with each person that's represented here tonight. Bless our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We need to add the... It's by... Before we do that, we need to amend the agenda to include appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Where do you want to put that line item, Mayor?
It will be line item... It'll be under new business. Item C.
Mr. Potter, do I need to remove my first to amend that motion? Okay. I'll remove my first.
Commissioner Dawson, do you want to remove yours? There's no need to remove the second.
I will remove the second.
And Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of item 11C.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings, there are none tonight. Citizen comments. Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am, we have three tonight. The first one is Mr. Jim McAllister.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address. And you have three minutes.
I'm Jim McAllister, 7162 Chessington Drive in Castleberry Farms, representing the concerned residents of Castleberry Farms. I find myself once again before you, asking your help regarding site work in the last phase of our subdivision. The decision of the Planning Commission several years back to interpret a provision of the residential zoning code that in other communities is merely an exemption for single properties to avoid putting an individual homeowner to the trouble and expense of hiring qualified parties to conduct tree surveys in order to build a garage or a shed on their property, assuming the structure qualified otherwise, and now is assumed to exempt all residential development of whatever size from any sort of tree protection. That's led to new and dangerous effects. Before I get to that, I want to let you know that Alfred Hayman, who was treasurer of our group, spoke before the Planning Commission on Tuesday and said something that only a couple of you know. Our group hired an attorney about a month... over a month back to better express our concerns. He's now sent multiple requests to the city, having been referred to the proper parties, and it has now been four weeks with no response. He was told there would be one, but still nothing. You may disagree with us, but it's a bad look to thumb your nose at us. Back to my main point. Though we understand the proper burn permits have been issued, we suspect that few, if anyone, realize the level of smoke created by burning 20 or so acres of down mature hardwoods, even just a few piles at a time. We have neighbors who have needed medical treatment as a result, and we're certainly not the only neighborhood affected. This happened in the last phase as well, before the first of the year. And to this point, the burns have been around 100 yards away from many houses so far. My wife Lois and I, along with a number of neighbors, will soon be staring down the barrel of the gun from a much closer distance when the impressively huge bridge across the creek, very close by, is completed. The pile, which is just beyond the bridge, appears to be about 30 feet long, 20 feet wide, and 12 or so high, and they just pushed down more trees on top of it today. You can imagine that we're really looking forward to that. We hope you might do something about it. At this point, in regards to the entire former 48 acres of forest, all our neighborhood can do is pray that the trees in the 30 feet of Aiden Branch floodplain, currently marked off by the required orange fencing and untouched so far, are left standing. But we have no assurances that the orange fence means anything. TDEC tells us that you control what happens around the creek unless there's an active pollution risk, and erosion doesn't qualify. They aren't happy about it, but they cannot stop the developer from doing what his demolition crew told me they would do on February 4th, which was to knock down every tree on the entirety of the property. Only you could stop that if you applied even a modicum of tree protection for buffering purposes, or creek protection at the least. That's what happens when you don't know what is really planned for a development you've approved. The sense of the board seems clear, expressed in the 2040 plan, say in...
I'm sorry, sir, your three minutes are up.
I'm sure that's true. Thank you so much.
We will escort you from the room. Who's the next one, Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Gail Cherry.
Gail, if you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Gail Cherry, and I live at 7153 Locksley Lane. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk. I attended the last meeting where the discussion was made on the playground, whether to move the date. And I want to say that I appreciate the work that is being done. I see it going up, and for me, that's very exciting. But I would like to see if we have the flexibility to change to a different date, and maybe call this a celebration instead of a grand opening. I heard you and Mr. Lucas, Mayor Rainey, say that a lot has been done, and I'm sure it has been, but I think every board member needs to know what has been done. And I have talked to several people who have donated money, and they have heard nothing from the city. And so I think that's very important, that these donors are recognized. They've put a lot of money into this playground, and I think the citizens... We've definitely put a lot of money into the playground, and we would just like to know what is happening. And I think everybody should be informed. That sits on this board of commissioners, that's very important, that every one of you know what's going on, not just two people. I know Mr. Collins says that safety is very important to him because he is the one that had the playground removed and the stage removed, or he went to the board of commissioners because he said it was not safe. We're out there in 100-degree heat. These men are trying to put this playground up in a three-week period, which should have taken two months. And so I hope it is safe when the kids go to play on it. And I would just like to make sure that somebody's testing the equipment before we allow people to play on it on the second. And I would love to see the concrete laid. I would love to see the donor signs up where these people are recognized. And I would also like to see the fence post up, because these people have paid to see these things, and they're going out there for the grand opening. I don't think we need two grand openings, because I don't think the donors will be recognized like they should be. And I turn the time back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Alfred Hayman.
If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Alfred Hayman, 7301 Kempton Court.
And just a reminder, you have three minutes.
I have very few comments. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I was given permission by all of the adjoining property owners next to Phase 3 of Aiden Woods to go onto their property for the purpose of observing the fires that are taking place in Phase 3. I'd like to report at this time a violation by the developer of Municipal Code 17-108, burning out without approval prohibited. Paragraph 3 specifies, "Bonfires and rubbish fires shall be constantly attended by a competent person until such fire is extinguished. Such person shall have a garden hose connected to the water supply or other fire extinguishing equipment, ready, available for use. Such person shall be at least 18 years of age." I went over there to the adjoining properties at approximately 6:10 this evening. I have multiple photographs and video proving that there weren't any employees there. When I initially drove up, there were two employee vehicles there. When I left, after seeing none of them out by the fires, there were no employee vehicles over there. It's a clear violation of the code. Please force this municipal code, and I would request that their burn permit be revoked. Men of mayor, I also mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting about Article 17-101.1, appointment of the city planner.
Tell me the code number again, please.
17-101.1, appointment of the city planner. There is hereby created the office of the city planner. City planner shall be executive head of the office and shall be appointed by the mayor in accordance with all applicable administrative procedures. In this forum, I again request that you appoint a city planner, someone to that office. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Potter, I know that we had talked about this Tuesday night. Have you had time to look into that ordinance? Okay. I will say that we are a city manager form of government. Typically, the mayor does not have authority to appoint any kind of employee. I would also like to say that as far as playground information, and only two of us have in it, Mr. Collins has been very diligent about informing this entire board at every meeting and updating us, so we all have the same information. And it's kind of a... We get emails constantly from the city manager updating all of us, so it's not just information that two of us have. But thank you. Public announcements, city events. Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Our next city event, excuse me, is the summer movie series. It's continuation of that on June the 25th. It's going to be Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. And then on July the 2nd is the playground grand opening with the movie in the park for that evening as well. Be a fun day for everyone. And then, of course, the July 3rd Independence Day celebration. Just to go over just a little tidbit on that, the gates open at 2:00 PM this year for the July 3rd celebration. All artists will be taken stage at 3:00 PM. National Anthem will be performed at 2:45. And we'll have multiple bounce houses, obstacle courses, sidewalk chalk, plus other activities for the kids. And then a Duncan booth, which several of you will be in the Duncan booth. So thank you for that. And we will also have a cornhole tournament that is free as well, with prizes to be given at the end. And of course, we have our great fireworks show display, which is provided by Midstate Heating and Air, and that will begin at approximately 9:00 PM. And just, we would like to thank all the sponsors that we've had this year. We've had over 30 sponsors for this event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay. Staff reports, staff comments and monthly reports. I'm assuming we're going to skip that tonight, unless Brandy, you have a comment. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Ten, old business. Zoning 7656 Horn Tavern Road. We will open the public hearing for that item. Is there anyone here to speak on that? No one? Then we will close the public hearing for that item. Ten A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-19, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 15 acres of property known as 7656 Horn Tavern Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, Parcel 017.00, from RS40 Residential to RS15 Residential. Property Owner Gene Hatcher.
We have heard the reading of the ordinance, the second and final reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I can, just some informational... Since we have some people here that got invited from public hearing letters, this is on Horn Tavern. If you're heading from Cleveland Lane, it'll be on your left right after the Pepper Tree subdivision. It's, I think, just under 15 acres. The next business item is adjoining. It's a two-acre piece, the request for the R15. I did have a question, Mr. Mangrum, from the neighbor there. Are you going to keep the existing house? Was a question I had.
House on... Excuse me.
On the next parcel.
The house on the two-acre tract, yes. We intend to remodel that, to make it fit what the standards will be for the new homes. There is a house in the bottom-left corner of this that's right against Horn Tavern on this parcel that we will demo.
That you will what?
We'll demolish it. We'll tear the one down that's closest to Horn Tavern.
I just didn't hear the last part of the sentence. I'm sorry. Any other questions of Mr. Mangrum?
Commissioner Butler, in the planning meeting, this did meet the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
That's correct, yep. It calls for a new residential medium, which could allow up to four units per acre. This R15 would be a 15,000 square foot lot size with a 75-foot front.
And that subdivision just to the left there, what is that zone currently?
That's an R15 PUD, so most of those lots are not even 15,000 feet.
Okay.
Because it was a PUD. But these will all be a minimum of 15,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ten B, zoning 7652 Horn Tavern Road. Is there anyone here to speak on that? We will open the public hearing. Anyone? Then we will close the public hearing. B2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-20, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning two acres of property known as 7652 Horn Tavern Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, Parcel 018.00, from RS40 Residential to RS15 Residential. Property Owner Gene Hatcher.
We've heard the reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion to... Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
This house... This tract has the house on it that we do intend to...
Any questions of Mr. Mangrum? Any discussion from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mangrum. Ten C, zoning Wiley Court, Hardcastle. We will open the public hearing for that. Is there anyone here to speak on that property zoning? No one? Then we will close the public hearing. C2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-21, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 4.52 acres of property located on Wiley Circle... I'm sorry, Wiley Court, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042HC, Parcel 008.00, from RS40 Residential to C-1 Commercial. Property Owner Wiley Circle Investments.
We've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone here to speak on this piece of property? You want to come forward just in case, please?
Mayor, just for informational, this is to the left of Food Saver you see there. So it wraps from Highway 100 all the way back to Wiley Circle on that northwest side. And in the future urban growth map, it calls out for commercial center on this parcel, which would be in line with the C1.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the realtor?
I'll try to answer a question if there is one.
Any plan currently for the site?
No. No. It was on the market for quite a while as a residential property, and with all the road frontage on Highway 100, plus being bordered by other commercial property and TVA lines running across the property, it just wasn't conducive to anything lending itself for a single-family home, even though there is an old abandoned house on the property and an old abandoned church building on the property. And vandals have pretty well taken care of those two buildings. So the questions would all would come up about commercial, and we just did not move to try to rezone, but we found out that just that had to be the next approach. So that's why we are here, to get it rezoned. No plans other than to continue to market it, but as a commercial piece at this point.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any discussion with the board?
This certainly seems to make sense. The rezoning of this property seems to make sense, and this isn't for you, sir. This is just a comment in general. That church has been there for quite some times, and as you have said, it has been vandalized. It's starting to become an eyesore, so hopefully we can do something with that property soon.
We hope so. And some of the inquiries we've had are very good, but when we told them that... And it wasn't anything like a MAPCO, no offense to MAPCO, but it wasn't anything like that. But we said it is not commercial, but we will work with you, or whatever. And, you know, that takes time, obviously, so people just seem to not be too interested.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler. Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey. I'm so sorry. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I called it that time, so I didn't vote twice. Item D, zoning Fairview Boulevard, France Scott Fetter Company. We will open the public hearing on that piece of property. Is there anyone here to speak on that? No one? Then we will close the public hearing. D2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-22, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 7.2 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 047, Parcel 010.00, from IG Industrial General to C-1 Commercial. Property Owner France Scott Fetter Company.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hi, sir. How are you? Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Murphy?
Mayor, just informational, that piece is nearly right after tract supply. It's the old France site from many years ago. The future use map does call for commercial corridor on this parcel, and Mr. Murphy told us at Planning Commission that their plan was retail space.
Any other discussion? Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Item E, annex 7350 Snow Mangrum Road. We will open the public hearing for that piece of property. Is there anyone here to speak on that? No one? Then we will close the public hearing for that annexation. Item E2, Resolution 16-22, Vice Mayor.
Resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Map 047, Parcel 064.01, 7350 Snow Mangrum Road, 10.12 acres. Owner, Robert Butler.
We've heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Is Mr. Butler here? Is there any discussion?
Commissioner Butler, what happened at the Planning Commission on that piece of property?
There's a favorable recommendation. These two parcels are at the end of Snow Mangrum Road. Snow Mangrum Road runs next to the high school, almost perpendicular to King. And so these two parcels are being requested annexed to be in. If they're annexed, they would come in at R40, which would be a one-acre-per-lot designation. I think there's... It's kind of currently a kind of a donut hole. Everything around it is city already annexed in it, including a parcel that Mr. Butler already owns down Snow Mangrum.
You're correct. That's... It's in a donut hole. It's an island in the county. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, annex 7360 Snow Mangrum Road. We will open the public hearing for that piece of property. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Hearing none. We will send no one. We will close the public hearing. F2, Resolution 17-22, Vice Mayor.
A resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Map 047, Parcel 065.00, 7360 Snow Mangrum Road, two acres. Owner, Robert Butler. Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let you decide who the second was. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I'll defer.
Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G, discuss playground grand opening. Vice Mayor, I believe you requested that be on the agenda, so I'll let you have the floor.
As I said in the last meeting, I just feel like I've visited the playground site every day, and I see that there's a lot of progress made, unless I have the information that... Which I don't think anybody can give, that it would be 100% done, 100% complete, ready on July 2nd. I believe that we should go ahead and have a soft opening where the kids can begin to play if the... If it's deemed safe to play and completely finished, but I don't see any reason why we should have a big grand opening when we don't have a playground that's complete. I think we should move that to possibly September 17th, more in the fall, so that it's complete, so that we can have a really big grand opening, and just something that this big project that so many people have put hard work into, you know, money, time, effort, can really, you know, have a great grand opening that it deserves. I'm going to let Commissioner Dawson talk about the different committees and their --
I'm gonna let Commissioner Dawson talk about the different committees and their feelings about this decision. And I'll turn it over to him now.
So first, I've got a, I've got a question. So Brandy, maybe you can help us understand this, too. Do we have any printed material or anything specific that we've spent, the city has spent money on that has July 2nd, that, that date, that hard date on it? And how much did we spend?
We do. In order to get everything in, we have to plan ahead for that kind of thing.
Sure.
So we did order some commemorative cups that people can take home. They have the Treehouse Playground logo on one side and then grand opening with July 2nd date on the other side. And as well, it was mentioned that everyone would want to share in the grand opening ribbon. So we did some printed ribbons so that we could have, we have 500 of the cups and 500 of the ribbons so that people could take home and a representation of the ribbon, the grand opening, the ribbon cutting.
Gotcha.
So we, we spent, I don't know, six, I think it's about $600 on those.
Okay. So, man, this is, for something that is so absolutely exciting, you know, we're, we're trying to make this decision, do we, do we push the date? Do we keep the date? It looks like there is progress being made out there. I'm not sure if anybody here has actually gone out to Booey Nature Park. And it, it looks like they're making progress on the playground. We know that they're making progress. We do know that it will not be complete July 2nd. There will not be pickets up. There won't be a donor wall up. And so that is the question. We know that the soft opening should have happened in May. Because of all of the material issues that we've had, that didn't happen. So now we're kind of getting pushed up against this July 2nd date. And we're going to have an unfinished product. Which is problematic in my mind. This is my opinion, of course. The problem that we have with that, we've had people that have spent a lot of money with donations for this playground. And we want to celebrate those people that donated. Some of the largest don't, well, the largest donors were the taxpayers of this city. They funded the majority of the playground. The second group are all of the donors that I think donated almost $100,000, which is huge and significant. My opinion once again is, this celebration, this grand opening, this amazing event, we should have a finished product. So that the community can come to the playground. They can see the pickets that they donated to. They can see their names on the pickets. We can have a donor wall up where the donors can be there, celebrating with the children, with the community. And they can see their names up on that donor wall. And in my mind, we only get one shot at this. It was a huge, huge deal when we had to take this playground down. I want it to be just the opposite. It should be a huge and big deal when we have a grand opening. As soon as the playground is complete, I feel we should have a soft opening, allow the children to come out there and play on it. As soon as the playground, the actual equipment, let them play on that. Have the soft opening just as soon as the last bolt is turned. But the grand opening should be a time where the donors and everybody can celebrate with a completed product. I was checking the forecast for the next 10 days. It looks like it's going to be 100 degrees every day. No, no chance of rain. We are still bumping up, though. Is, is it going to be ready? Is it going to be complete? The last I heard last week, the, the, the construction folks said that, yeah, we'll, we'll have it complete. Why, though, are we trying to bump up against this two-week deadline? What if it's not complete? I mean, they're, they're, I would say maybe not even halfway done constructing it. What happens if it's not complete on July 2nd? Once again, we have a situation where I, I would not want that. I would love to have this pushed out, this celebration where we can have a huge event where we can really sit down and plan this amazing event, have the donors there, have everybody there at one time, and have the community just have a, have a huge event. So I, I've, I've reached out to a number of, of folks in the community that have a vested interest. It sounds like the P and L Board, the majority of them would like to see the, the date pushed. Park and Landscape Board. The Playground Committee, sounds like the majority of them would like to see that date pushed. The POPSE Committee, the Park Operational Plan Committee is unanimous. They would like to see that date pushed back. And then the Friends of Booey Nature Park, their board, the majority would like to see that date pushed back. They would like to see that pushed back and not on July 2nd. So I, I would like to make the recommendation tonight for us to, to vote to push the grand opening back to September 17th.
I make a recommendation.
Yes.
And this is totally off the cuff here, but we haven't had signage. We haven't, haven't had anybody bid on that. We haven't put that bid package together yet. We don't have the, any of the fence pickets and any of that bidding stuff done. I don't know that it will, ever, all of that will be done by September 17th. I would recommend, instead of putting a date, maybe wait and assign that date later, once we know things would be complete, if that's
Okay.
what you desire.
I appreciate that. That's a, that's a responsible thing to do. And I, I, I hope we, we can just do the responsible thing here. Thank you, Brandy, for that. So I guess I, I would like to make a recommendation that we push back the grand opening to a date in the future.
Sorry. Any other discussion?
When do we, when are we gonna take the, or get, go into the bidding process for the pickets and the donor wall?
That's being worked on, but it just takes some time to get all the documents together for the, especially for the donor wall and the signage and the whole entrance there. We actually had to wait till they started so that we could see exactly where the sidewalk is going to be. And that would indicate exactly where the fence would be, so that we get the exact dimensions of everything together. So now that they've started and we have the, the footprint down, then we could begin the rest of the process.
Okay. And we have voted on the sketch that you made, so that
Right. The design is set, but it's just a matter of getting all the other details together. So that can be put out.
So I guess, would it be possible for each meeting for us to get an update on where we are in the bidding process for that and the pickets? Just so we know where we're at.
Sure. I mean, that'll all go out on the website, too, so it'll be public knowledge.
I'd like to have it public, because we have so many people here that are interested in that.
Is there a chance that it won't be ready July 2nd? Do you guys know?
I talked to the city manager this afternoon. It's 6:05. He has had no notification or any indication that it will not be ready to open July 2nd.
But I imagine if it's not ready, if it was a liability, we would not open it. If, if the entire park, playground wasn't put together, we wouldn't open it on July 2nd if something happens and it gets delayed. I, I don't, what are we, I don't know what we're calling, if we're calling it the grand opening, if the cup says grand opening. But I think if July 2nd, the playground and the mulch is down and, and the site is clean enough for, for people to play, will the mulch be down? Are you shaking your head? Okay, yes, sorry. I think it's still an exciting day. I don't necessarily want to call it the grand opening. I am full steam ahead. Let's, let's figure out when those pickets are going to be here, when that sign will be here. And let's schedule the event and let's have a big day for our city. But the moment that playground is together, assembled and safe for kids, let's put them on it and, and let's celebrate that. This is kind of how I feel. I think you proceed with what we have. And just know, and let it be known, we plan on a bigger event when it's tied up and put the ribbon on it. Because they're both going to be exciting days, you know. But I think we have a temporary sign for the donors that will be in place, that will have every donor's name on it and things, so. You know.
I think that one of the updates we received was there would be a donor dedication day when all the other donors and pickets are up. My concern, I mean, all of us who have children or have had children realize that as soon as school starts, on Saturdays, kids are at soccer games and football games and they're scattered to the four winds. And the very people we have built this playground for probably would not be in force at the event. That's always my concern. I have two grand boys. I have to schedule time to see them after school starts, so it's hard. We have gotten updates at almost every board meeting from our city manager telling us where we are. We have had this schedule, I think, since December or before December of last year. So it's kind of been known. We have known the full time that it was very possible that the donor wall would not be complete because of, we have to have the footprint. It takes time. And so that stuff would not be done. I talked to the city manager tonight before I came here. There has been no indication from the builders that it will not be ready by July 2nd. So that's the information that I have. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, real quickly, I want to kind of reiterate what I said last week, however. I, I don't know that I see an issue with having two events, one for the children, which is what the playground's for anyway, and one for the donors later on when that's completed. I, I think it's anticlimactic to have a playground just randomly open and just kids wandering onto it to find out, yeah, it's open. I don't see the issue with having two events personally. I have been to several grand openings, even lately, where they opened and the facility wasn't finished. But they opened so that they could start utilizing and having this thing. And even later, having another event later down the road that was more formal and things like that. So again, we've, we've, it's 600 bucks. At the end of the day, it's not an insane amount of money. But there has been a lot of time, energy and effort to go into this, to make it really cool for the kids. And I think you can still do that and not have to cancel the July 2nd event. If for some reason there is a, a reason why we can't do it on the 2nd, that's a little out of our hands. If it's not done, there's weather issues, things like that. That's a different ballgame, I think. But in this case, I just don't, I don't understand why we still can't have two openings, essentially. Again, one for the children, one for, for the adults and I, the donors, I should say. And I think to answer Commissioner Butler's question, I believe that, if I remember correctly in the conversations, the builder won't release the project to us until it has gone through all of their safety inspections and all of those checks. And they deem it safe to play on and things like that. So we're, we're, we're good there. I'm not worried about that part.
One more thing, Mayor. So, let's do it. Let's follow the plan. We're supposed to have a soft opening in May. We didn't hit it. We are supposed to have a grand opening after the soft opening. Let's do it. Let's, let's have a grand opening. You want to talk about anticlimactic? The people that donated thousands of dollars are going to show up to an event, that they're the only ones that are going to be there. If we have a donor event, I doubt anybody else is going to show up. So let's follow the timeline that we said at the very beginning. We're going to have a soft opening in May. We're going to have a grand opening. Let's have our soft opening July 2nd and let's have a big grand opening. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
I think what scares me, Commissioner Dawson, is in the time period we live with delays, with issues in building and timeframes, what if it's six months? You know, what, what if we never have a, a true opening? What, and what if it's four or five months and the parks, the playground has been ready to play on and it's, I just feel like it's going to lose its shine. It's going to lose its allure a little bit if we, if it pushes too much. It's not a new park anymore, playground anymore, you know.
It, it should be up to us. And if we've got a fast-track pickets being done, if, I mean, I would hope that we would be able to get a picket fence up and a donor wall.
But it was a very, we, we picked a recycled picket. It's a very special picket. The resin itself was six grand to get because shipping had gone so crazy when we budgeted. So it's, it's a very special piece that isn't just going to be easily rushed, I'm afraid.
So my understanding, we, we have the company and we have the price and they're ready to, to do those pickets. What we are waiting on is installation. Is that correct, Brandy? We're trying to, we're going to have to bid out installation.
We will have to do that as well. We're not sure if the manufacturer is going to do the installation, if it's going to be a separate installation.
Correct.
There, there's lots of parts and pieces that have to work together.
That's what we're working on, though, or we're going to have to possibly bid out. But the pickets, we've identified a company. They, that was my understanding that the entire time.
I do believe that the picket company was on some kind of purchasing co-op that we
Right.
are able to purchase through them, but
Okay.
but the installation would definitely have to be bid.
Yeah. It's just, it, it's possible. Anything, in today's world, anything is possible. You're right. I would hope that, that we could fast-forward that a little bit, that we wouldn't drag this out a year.
One more thing. What I don't want to see is us have some grand opening with a playground that's not ready to be played on. I mean, that, I, I went out there and visited, talked to several of the people constructing the playground, asked if they thought, they only work five days a week, Monday through Friday. There's about 10 days left before workdays. Asked them if they thought it would be ready and I got a negative. So I'm just, I don't think it's going to be ready. I'm excited for the kids to be able to play as soon as it's deemed safe to play on. But as far as a big grand opening with all of our donors and, and, you know, the community come together, you know, we've had Nature Fest in the fall for years. And there's never been an issue with tons and tons of children coming out in the fall to Nature Fest. So I don't see why there'd be an issue if we have a big grand opening for the children, the donors and our community to be able to, you know, experience what this should happen, what should happen with this as far as the project that we have all worked on so hard and spent so much money on. Why rush it? That's my question. We have, all kinds of businesses have soft openings. Restaurants, you know, I've just seen all kinds of businesses have soft openings. That's, that's commonplace. So when, when it's ready, it's deemed safe, let the children go ahead and play. And when we have the donor wall finished and we can have this big celebration, I don't understand why we have to rush that. That's my opinion.
I think if it's not ready, it doesn't, it doesn't open July 2nd, because it'd be our liability. It'd be the playground company's liability. But as, as far as I'm concerned, July 2nd will be soft opening because it's not done. So I, that's how I envision it.
Any other discussion?
How do you have a soft opening when it's not finished? You can't open something that's not finished.
Could be played on. If we can have an event in the park every weekend, I would be for that. If it's not finished, they can't, can't open it.
Okay, then we wouldn't have a soft opening on July 2nd because it's not ready.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Potter? We have, well, okay, let's ask this question. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I've already made the motion, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, repeat your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to push the grand opening of the playground to a date in the future to be determined by the completion of the playground.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
So if we delay the grand opening, we just don't have anything? It just opens? Is that?
Yeah, the soft opening as soon as it's complete, yeah.
So if we, if we delay this to some indefinite date on July 2nd, we will still have the bounce houses and the, Mr. Ross, can you tell us what we will have?
It'd be just the movie in the park, but let me just clarify something, that we have gone to Publix and requested a grant through them for supplies for that day. We're allowed to ask for several grants throughout the year through any organization, but if we cancel out on a grant, they, they mark us down as a negative. So, that puts a negative reflection upon the city for any future grants. That doesn't mean that we won't receive one, it's just a negative reflection.
And I know from experience, Publix is, it's very competitive getting Publix grants.
So, we can still have the food there for the soft opening?
We can.
We can.
So, is the, so are you, in your motion, do you mean for July 2nd to be the soft opening?
Do I need to have that in the motion?
I think so, yes.
And just so I'm clear, Mayor, we're saying that on the soft opening, there's going to be food, there's going to be a bounce house.
No, I'm sorry, I just made up the bounce house part. I'm sorry. I was getting the fourth, the third and the second all confused. I'm so sorry. So, let me repeat that. I said bounce house inappropriately because on July 3rd, we're having bounce houses.
That's correct. So, if we do have a soft opening, we'll still have the food, the refreshments, we'll still have the movie in the park that evening, make a full day of it, and as of right now, we still have planned for two food vendors, food trucks that are local, to come out to that event. And if we have the soft grand opening, then we can still have those come out to the event, but there won't be a bounce house.
Thank you.
So, are we saying we're going to have a soft opening even if the playground's not open to play on? That doesn't make sense to me.
I don't think there's been any discussion that the playground will not be ready to play on.
I think we've discussed, if the playground's not ready to play on, the city won't take, essentially, for lack of a better term, ownership of it anyway. The company won't release it to us until it is deemed safe to play on.
Then why would we vote on a specific date for a soft opening if we don't know that's going to happen?
It's your motion, not mine.
It's not mine, it's Mr. Dawson's, but I don't, Commissioner Dawson's, but I don't think that was his motion.
Commissioner Dawson, what was your motion?
It was to push the grand opening of the playground to a future date, and as soon as the playground is ready, if that is July 2nd, which we are projecting to have a soft opening.
Mr. Potter? In a motion, can we have an if? Okay. So, repeat your motion.
To push the grand opening of the playground to a future date when the playground is complete and have a soft opening on July 2nd, or when the playground equipment is complete.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Nay.
Mayor Rainey.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I almost called you Joe. New business, 11A, Resolution 19-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of three Planning Commission members. So, we're doing this a little differently tonight because I think that there was some confusion about when we were going to do this. I'm going to let Ms. Johnson read our nominees or the people who have expressed interest. We would like to talk to you. There will be no motions to appoint until we hear from everyone here and we hear their qualifications. So, when your name is called, if you will come up and talk to us, that will be great. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Haley Schulist.
If you'll tell us your name and your address and what your interest is in the Planning Commission.
Good evening. My name is Haley Schulist. I live at 7165 Kyles Creek Drive. I have been on the Planning Commission for three years, so my seat is expired, and I would like to be reappointed. I've really enjoyed getting to give back to the community in this way as it's part of my career, as well as passion to be involved in commercial and residential real estate in some way, but community involvement as well. I do a lot of community volunteer work outside of Planning Commission, and I've really enjoyed being able to participate in the City of Fairview's future.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions? You get to be officially interviewed, too. Any questions, anyone on the board? Okay, Ms. Johnson.
I'm going to apologize now if I butcher any of these names, it's not intentional. Michelle Murakami.
If you'll tell us your name and your address and your interest in the Planning Commission.
My name's Michelle Murakami, Laura Michelle Murakami. I live on 7117 Cooper Lane. I was born and raised in Fairview, moved out for a little while, but I've been back for more than 13 years. I have my whole family here, and I care very deeply about Fairview and the direction that the city goes, so I would like to be a part of helping to make sure that our citizens are heard, and I don't, I don't know what all is involved in the Planning Commission, but what little research I've done, I feel like I could contribute and would like to have that opportunity.
Any questions? Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Stacy Bully Fawcett was not available to be here tonight, but she was interested. Is Mr. Sean Sergo here?
Wait a minute, so we're going to have Mr. Butler to read the application of the people who are not here. I'm sorry, I did not update you on that process.
Ms. Fawcett lives at 7108 Pleasant Grove Court. As a resident of our beloved City of Fairview, I would be honored to serve in a planning capacity. I bring the table, bring to the table my experience as an attorney for 18 years and a passion for our city and its planned growth.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Not present tonight. David Magner could not attend tonight.
Let me read Mr. Sergo's real quick. Mr. Sergo has a list of community involvement that he's been a part of, so the Fairview Chamber of Commerce, the American Legion of Fairview, the Marine Corps Legion of Fairview supports multiple, multiple local groups, local resident and business owner, background in construction and development of neighborhoods.
And, Mr. Magner?
Ms. David Magner.
Mr. Butler.
Mr. Magner, 5027 Bobo Court. I'm a local resident in Fairview who has lived in the middle Tennessee area since 2001, being a principal owner and architect with Gresham Smith. I have a great interest in preserving our Tennessee heritage, sense of Fairview community, and helping control growth in a smart, economical, and appropriate manner. My background includes bachelor's of science in both environmental design and architecture, and I'm licensed architect in the state of Tennessee, reciprocal to Missouri and Indiana. My family and I were attracted to Fairview as we enjoy the sense of community, friendly people, and beautiful countryside. My hope is to support the long-term residents of Fairview in a user-friendly and family-oriented community. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Bobby Butler.
Ma'am. Mr. Butler, 7510 Nathaniel Woods. Even though I'm new to living in the community of Fairview, I've been around here for the past 20-plus years after marrying my wife, her family is well-established and has been here since the 1800s. I'm very interested in supporting such a thriving community. Some of my personal experience includes working with Time and Bank in Chicago, as well as an insurance expector in evictions, damage and contents report for FHA, before locating to Tennessee, owned Butler Construction Enterprises, working with FHA, FMHA, and VA agencies.
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Mr. Butler.
Dear board members, my first board meeting was two days ago on Tuesday, January 12, 2021. I was so impressed by the care you obviously have for our City of Fairview and its residents. When I heard there was an open position for a citizen could hold and serve Fairview as you do, I found myself very interested, wanting to do the same. Therefore, I am submitting my application to you for your consideration. In regards to community service, my family and I have been official Fairviewans for approximately 12 years, and I have served the children and their families at Fairview as a teacher of grades K through 12 since 2005. I was also proud at some point in my teaching career in Fairview to have been voted Fairview Elementary's Teacher of the Year and to represent Fairview when I also received Williamson County's Teacher of the Year that same year. Furthermore, I feel I must continuously strive to learn more and more about the field of education, so I worked for and received National Board Certification. Through my involvement in schools, I serve as various club sponsors, and we create a family literacy program to help several adults in our community learn English as a second language. I also serve as a board member for TNTESOL, Tennessee Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Language. Besides serving through community service opportunities that have arisen through my teaching career, I serve every summer at our churches camp in Missouri as a housekeeper for the camp. This experience has been invaluable, and through it, not only have I been able to help our camp continue, I have also had the great opportunity to learn from other volunteers. I'm so grateful for the healing ideas and spiritual growth I gain from those volunteers in the camp every year. Thank you again for your consideration of my application. All the best to you, Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Kyle Tortorelli.
If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
My name's Kyle Tortorelli. I live at 7119 Donald Wilson Drive. I've lived in Fairview for just shy of four years. My wife has worked at Fairview Elementary for about 10 years. We were drawn to the community because of her close-knit family at the school, and we just loved it out here. We're at home here, and this is where we plan to be for the long term. Background on me is I've got 10 years of general contracting experience as a project manager, so I'm very used to building and zoning and the similar things to that. I also did start, when I, when we lived in Nashville, I did start a community neighborhood association in a neighborhood where there was a lot of development going on. They were demoing one house, building four or five houses on the same property, and we, in conjunction with the local council person, were able to get a zoning overlay put into place for our neighborhood that helped with, you know, getting sidewalks put in, in as the developments were going along. So, I think that I've got the skill set needed to be an asset to the city.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Mr. James Evans.
Is Mr. Evans here? Commissioner Butler.
Mr. James Evans, 7112 Taylor Road, Fairview, Tennessee. I've lived in Fairview with my family now for three years and would like to serve the city. My skill set includes five years of project management work and process operations. I've served on several boards with my company and worked with the financial team at Aquanis College in Nashville. Outside of my primary employment, I am the junior partner of Iron Horse Holdings, a financial company. I would be honored to be considered for this position and have the opportunity to get back to the city.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Richard Olziewski.
Are we sure that he's still, Commissioner Lucas, is this the gentleman that?
Yes, he was, he's, I'm sorry. He spends some of his time in Florida, and I do not recall now when he said he was retiring, essentially, I'm probably phrasing this wrong, retiring, essentially back to, to Fairview. He spends his majority of his time here in Fairview, but in the summertime, he does go to Florida, so I don't know that he would, he's necessarily an applicant at this point.
I did not hear back from him. I did ask everyone that had applied, let them know to be present if they could and that kind of thing. I did not get a response back from him.
Please, no, just so there's no confusion about what's happening here. A lot of these applications are from last year, and so some of these people have kind of, you know, chosen other paths and not necessarily interested in this anymore. But Commissioner Dawson, I mean, Commissioner Butler, let's go ahead and read the application.
Yes, ma'am. Richard Olziewski, excuse me, 7562 RB Ridge. I have owned a residential property in Fairview since 2016, and this is our primary residence since April 2020. I am semi-retired, having retired from my corporate career in April 2015 from LP Building Products Company, at that time serving as the Executive Vice President of Sales and Marketing for the company. Prior to that time, I served in sales, marketing, general management, and executive positions for Avery-Denison Corporation and Monsanto Chemical Company. Since 2013, I have been the sole proprietor of Nashville Now Investments LLC, doing residential real estate development and investing in rental property ownership and management in Davidson and Williamson County. My activities in my company are purposely declining, with just one to two new home projects to complete in Williamson County in '21, before more active retirement in the future. I currently serve as a board member of the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee, as a board member of the Middle Tennessee Council of the Boy Scouts of America. I previously served with the boards of several charitable organizations, and also was the Man of the Year for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society of Tennessee, Alabama. My past executive experience and working relationship with major builders and real estate development companies would be beneficial to commission as Fairview navigates the challenges and opportunities of growth in the future.
Sir. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. LaRonda Williams.
And you did hear back from her? Okay. Oh, and she's here. That's okay, I've gotten so accustomed to people not being here, I didn't even look up. I apologize.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is LaRonda Williams. I live at 7201 Dice Lampley Road. I've been a resident of Fairview since 2007. I left in 2014 due to work, and I came back in 2018. I have experience in managing large, multimillion-dollar budgets. I managed and opened Rafferty's Restaurant at 100 Oaks. I opened the Rafferty's in Cookeville and opened the one in Rivagate. In addition to that, I served in, with the Department of Corrections as a commission officer, a former warden, parole chief for the 18th, 19th, and 21st District, and I am very eager to be a member of this committee and serve the community the best way that I can.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm impressed. All the things that you've been involved in, that's incredible.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Shad Adams.
And you did not hear back from him? Correct. Commissioner Butler.
Ms. Mayor, 7428 Pinn Grove Lane, Shad Adams. I moved to Fairview 15 years ago. I chose to buy a home in Fairview because I saw the potential for growth. I wanted to be a part of that growth and part of the community as it grew. The reason I want to be a part of the Planning Commission is because I want to help Fairview grow and grow the right way. I want to help create a strategic plan for growth, one that includes infrastructure and a true vision for what Fairview will look like in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years. I've watched the explosive growth in Spring Hill and have been seeing areas where they have succeeded and areas where they have failed. They grew too fast without a strategic plan and a true vision. I want to help make sure Fairview does the right thing, right way. I've been an active part of the Fairview community. I was a board member with Fairview Soccer Association for over eight years. During my time on the board, I helped rescue an organization that was in financial ruins due to former president treasurer embezzling over $75,000 from FSA through selling sponsorships and organizing soccer camps at clinics. I joined an organization that was in debt, and when I stepped away from the board in 2020, FSA had over $30,000 in the bank. I helped grow registration numbers by more than 50 cent, by marketing, 50% by marketing and advertising the program. Also was instrumental in working with Williamson County Parks and Recreation to get irrigation installed on both the upper and lower fields and getting the lower fields sodded. The upper fields will be sodded in 2022. My wife, both my boys, and I love living in Fairview, want to be a part of the growth while also helping Fairview keep its small-town charm. I'm excited to watch the growth in Fairview and would love to play a role in the growth and development of our town.
Thank you, sir. That is all of the applicants? That is all of the applicants. I will now open the floor to nominations and I will nominate Ms. Haley Schulist to return to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Do we want to do the three seats and then vote? Can we do that? All right, so we Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor to renominate Haley Schulist to the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say Haley is finishing her first term, which is a three-year term on the Planning Commission. Has been a part of several of our staff meetings and kind of informational and has been an asset to the Planning Commission. I think right as you kind of finish your first term, you really start to feel comfortable in your seat. She's been taking, playing a part in the discussion, so I think it would be a good add.
I'll say something as well.
Okay, so my motion is to appoint her. Yes. Yes, that's what I, yes, thank you.
Just a second comment about Haley, or Mrs. Schulist, excuse me. You know, when you sit in and watch these boards, you can tell who is prepared, who has looked at the agenda, who truly took the time to understand what they're voting on. And Mrs. Schulist certainly does that, you can tell she really cares and she takes the time before the meeting to really understand the content and makes an informed decision, so thank you.
Any other discussion? So, do we still need to vote? Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll to reappoint Ms. Schulist to the Planning Commission?
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
So, we now have one seat filled, we have two others to fill.
I'd like to make a motion. Or, motion to appoint LaRonda Williams.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so Mrs. Williams is a part of the Park Operational Plan Committee. And not only does she have a very impressive resume, but she has great candor and she certainly cares about this community as well. She wants to be involved, she shows up and she is already engaged. So, I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
May I make a motion to appoint Mr. David A. Magnar?
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mayor, in his application, he says he's a principal owner of Gresham Smith and an architect. I looked him up today, it looks like he's in the, on the healthcare side and commercial side. But I think as we go through design review, as we go through land planning, an architect and kind of with that vision and input would be beneficial to our board, or to our committee.
Thank you, sir, any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
And I'd just like to say real quick to Ms. Williams, I will be getting in touch with you about starting your work on the Planning Commission, okay?
Thank you so much, all of you. We have another, some more seats that are open on a different board that we would be interested in asking if you would like to serve on, so if you will hang around, we'll have a very informal, would you like to serve kind of discussion. So, we have our three seats filled for the Planning Commission, thank you so much. And we will see you all at the next Planning Commission meeting. New Business 11B, Resolution 18-22, Vice Mayor?
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the I'm sorry.
Item B.
I'm sorry, B, okay. A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating a vehicle as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 11C, Appointment of individuals to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two expiring seats. Correct?
Yes, ma'am, there are two expiring seats and then, which both of those individuals now have expressed an interest in being reappointed. Ms. Sarah Bush and Mr. Greg Dwyer, we did hear from him after the meeting started. And then there's one seat that has been open for some time that we're looking to fill.
So, Ms. Johnson, could you explain, high level of what the Board of Zoning Appeals, what a member would do?
No, I cannot.
I will defer to you.
I fortunately have sat on the Board of Zoning Appeals in the past. I think it's going to be meeting more commonly in, in the future. It is going to be the variance granting power. If any variances would be requested from the Planning Commission would go, or, or on a property owner's property. Any variances or adjustments from any ordinances, am I saying that correctly, Mr. Potter?
And one of the things we discussed, I think, Tuesday night was that you would be trained to know what the city rules and regs are. So that when you create those variances, you will know what you're varying from. So, is there anyone that applied for the Planning Commission that would be interested in serving that seat? Okay.
Motion to appoint Mr. Kyle Tortorelli to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I know Mr. Tortorelli has applied several times, I've seen him at several meetings. I know he has the structure and kind of the background, I think to understand it and engage in it, I think you'd, he continues to show up, he continues wanting to be involved, I think he would be, be good for it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much and thank you to everyone who applied for these open seats. I know that it can be difficult to just give up your time and we do truly appreciate your involvement.
Mayor, quickly, I will make an appointment to fill the two expiring seats on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Sarah Bush and Greg Dwyer, to reappoint them to a new term.
I'm sorry, yes. So, there's a motion on the floor to reappoint, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, communications from the Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Lucas.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor, we do have two seats that are open on the Park Operational Plan Committee. Those will be posted hopefully this week, if not this week, next, on the, on the city website. So, excited to get those two positions filled. Also excited about some of the work that is being done from the list that we submitted to the VOC. It looks like either the list, the things that are on the list to fix in Bowie Nature Park and at Triangle Park are either fixed or they have been bid out. So, we're really excited to see some movement in that direction. Also, just to just to reiterate how excited we are to finally see movement on that playground. It is, it is simply amazing and dreams are going to come true for kids and can't wait for that thing to get up and to see kids on that playground. I want to thank the city staff for everything that they're doing with these upcoming events. All of these events are simply amazing and they're free to the public and it's just great stuff, so thank you so much.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would just like to say that the Veterans Fireworks Tent will be open for operation and purchase on June 21st. Let's help them sell out. All the money goes to local charities and scholarships in our community and they're located by the Lions Club in the baseball field off Highway 96. Also, I have noticed several people picking up trash. I know it's been really hot lately, so I really appreciate everything they're doing out there. One fellow told me that he suffers with some health issues, his doctor told him to get out and walk and so he said, "I might as well just get me a, you know, a grabber and some gloves and pick up some trash while he's doing it." So, that was really exciting. We just want to keep our community really clean. And I just want to let the concerned citizens of Castleberry know that I care. I've been out there and visited the site. I will be looking into these municipal codes and follow up with you. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor, Happy Father's Day this weekend. Very excited to see the playground going vertical. And thank you to everyone who applied for Planning Commission, BOZA. And in years past, we would sometimes get no applications for empty seats, so it's very exciting to see so many people showing interest and want to be a part of it. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir. And I also want to echo Commissioner Butler, thank you so much for applying. It's, it's good to see people wanting to be involved. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.